May call an order this meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, April 8, 2014. If everybody will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before us we have the agenda as presented. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads?
One in parks program. It would be number seven, Wear Blue Day.
And to counterbalance that, I will be removing zoning number two sidewalks.
Are there any other additions, deletions, or corrections? Okay, the agenda will stand as amended. It's gonna start with the sheriff's report, which we have nothing under. Do we have anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the sheriff's office with any questions? Could you just state your name, Ms. Garber, for the record, name and address?
Suzanne Garber, 5915 Linder Circle, Northeast. There was some activity Thursday morning on Linder Circle, three houses from our house, and I'm wondering if you're at the other end, tell me what was going on. It went on for about ten hours. Multiple, multiple official vehicles.
On Linder Circle?
Oh, yeah, 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 I was out there. I had to think about it for a second. Yeah, we were, we were out there on a civil paper service for that property. There wasn't anything criminal, but it was a civil issue that one of our tenants from the civil division and two deputies, and they just requested some extra officers with them.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the crowd that wishes to address, or anything with sheriff's department? Okay, that'll close the sheriff's report. Turn it over to Detective Cunnitt for the detective's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. March 2014 report is as follows. We had 788 calls for service, 75 crash reports, 14 crash reports worth injury. Both those numbers were down from March as opposed to February. Ninety-five alarms, 181 traffic stops, 124 citations, and 50 arrests, which was a little higher than February with 30 bookings and 20 summonses. I also conducted 17 follow-up investigations with four closed cases and five follow-ups for the zoning department.
Any questions for the detective regarding the stats? Detective Cunnitt? That'll close the detective's report. We're gonna go to unfinished business. I'm gonna turn that over to our administrator, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution to change order from Hillshire Clark for materials and to authorize payment to Hillshire Clark in an amount not to exceed $875.18, fund from Fund 21A04D.
Second discussion, I'm assuming this is related to the restroom? The restroom?
It is, and you'll see the follow-up change order will actually end up with credit, so...
Further discussion, roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings us to the second change order, in which there was a credit for 85514 from Fund 21A04D, so it was almost a wash there for materials and so forth.
Also move unfinished business number two. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes new business, or unfinished business. We'll move on to new business and continue with Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. I have a resolution before the board to enter into the attached agreement with Dutton Auctioneers to dispose of the unneeded property in accordance with ORC 505.10 and ORC 505.101 at a public auction on May 17, 2014, at the Plain Township Road Garage located at 6300 Heminger, Northeast Kent, Ohio, and to authorize the advertising of the above unneeded items and auctions pursuant to ORC 505.10.
So move second discussion. Just as a point of clarification, I know as side conversation, I'd say having our own material in there, is there any benefit, or can we even talk to the neighboring townships to see if there's any thing that they may look to put in? I'm simply bringing it up because I've seen that done in other auction scenarios. I don't know what that means, though, from a tracking or reporting and so forth.
We can have discussions if they have maybe some bigger vehicle items would bring some attractions. It would be in the discussions that we've had harder if it was like a lot of the smaller items as far as tracking, but we will have discussions as far as if they have vehicles to unload, because that would be easy as far as attracting more people and as far as tracking when it's purchased, when it's sold, as far as for auditing purposes also. So absolutely, I will give local townships, our neighboring townships, a call, because it won't change our cost of the auction. And I did get several quotes, and we had worked with Dutton in the past, and they actually handled all of the, all of the advertising for us. Their cost was the most reasonable and easiest to work with, so we did look at several other auctioneers also. And as we get closer, I'll let the board know at the time of the auction.
Anything else regarding discussion on the history of auctions? Roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Okay, and item number two is a resolution to accept the attached rate schedule for life accidental death and dismemberment insurance from the Standard Insurance Company for the period of June 1, 2014 through June 1, 2016.
So move second discussion.
Just to point out to the board that there's no change in rates for the next two years, so it has stayed the same.
Roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And the final item before the board is a resolution for the false alarms.
Also move second discussion, roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And so ends the business.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. That's gonna take us to the fiscal officer's report, and I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on the agenda is a request for a resolution about a Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize the payment of the pending warrants in an amount of $216,799.11, attached here to make part of the bids.
Also move second discussion, roll call. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize the payment of the regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000. So move second discussion, roll call. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Discussion number three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize the payment for following medical claims as provided by health care and special scripts. So move second discussion, roll call. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number four is the financial report. Fiscal officer number five is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize a refund as follows for overpayments for emergency medical services requested by Ohio Bill. Second discussion, roll call. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number six is a request for a resolution for the renewal of the Section 125 of Plain. So move second discussion, roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
That concludes the fiscal officer's report for today. Thank you, Mr. Flex. There's nothing under administrator. Fire department, I turn it over to Deputy Chief Schallberger.
First item on the agenda is our monthly call volume of March. Item number two is a resolution to reimburse Michael Hill for healthcare membership according to provision 37 of the collective bargaining agreement.
So move second discussion, roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to authorize purchase and payment and shipping for protective fire gear from the Firehouse Company in an amount not to exceed $23,000.
So move second discussion. Chuck, just as a point of clarification, I'm pretty sure Chief's brought this up in the past, but this is for that set, is this towards that secondary set of gear? For replacement guys based upon their failure, some of their old equipment, but then as well sake of allowing the time for the other?
Yeah, replacement of worn and then every 10 years because of the standards we have to replace, so it's kind of a replacement in for one year too. And we're gonna do that with a three-year phase, from 10 to 11 sets each year.
Roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
This is fired.
Concludes fire.
Thanks, Deputy Chief. That's gonna take us to Public Service Department, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Iacino.
Mr. Chairman, item number one is the monthly road report. You can see there's a lot of etching this last one. Continue to do it every day. Hopefully this next week or so, hot mix will be available.
It wouldn't, but this cold mix still have almost twice, twice or more?
Yes, twice the cost.
It's the necessary evil.
They had a fire at the plant, and we got a lay-in on the hot mix, but I think they're getting to where they need to be. Item number two is the Auction Facilities Monthly Report for March. The fields are coming, looking very good. Rob and I have been keeping an eye on them, and we do have that tournament this weekend, but they'll be ready to go as long as we don't get, they wouldn't rain again, so it's supposed to be dry for the next five days.
Outside of those fields, just question with respect to Schneider and the dollar park over there. What we're doing, you could do on the small one, who is over there?
Probably just see it and roll it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that was more of a rejuvenation process than anything, allowing that turf to recover after the muddy mess that was created there.
We, I think Joe happened to be out there right after that winter was trying to let go and noticed that there was a lot of activity there, it was wet, and it was starting to to...
Chew it up because the bigger dogs were in the little park, you know, so it was plenty of dogs. I see Big Dog Park's taking stance, and they're starting, if we get some sun on it, hopefully it's taking off.
So anticipate the tents are some kind of made, weather continued and so forth.
I would think so.
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, we did this to make sure that we didn't have to continually close one side to continually rejuvenate the other.
Yeah, you're right, Rob. If we'd have got the large dog park, you know, growing good and everything, and we had let him continue on that small dog park, we would have to do the same thing this coming fall with the small dog park more likely. Item number three is a resolution to purchase 600 feet of 18-inch ABS culvert from Marlboro Supply for a gross housing project.
Also move discussion, roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number four is a resolution to sell township accumulated scrap metal, which has a salvage value of less than $2,500.
Also move second discussion, roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number five is just informational, I was approached by Sergeant Romperdo yesterday. They're gonna have two OVI checkpoints in the township, and I do believe it's gonna be May 17th, that's the target date right now, it's not confirmed. We're still figuring out which street first it was gonna be, East and now I think a couple across town that they're looking at, so.
I think we talked about somewhere on Middle Branch, too.
He threw a bunch of them out at us, and he wants the early department to help set up zones with cones, and it'll be from 6 to 11, 6 to 10, I think, or 6 to 11, so. By Saturday night. I do believe he said because there's a couple of prones around town that night. So that's what they're targeting at also. And they're getting a grant from that one, you, who will pay for our time also, right?
That should be one of those interesting evenings to shadow the sheriff's office.
Yes, it would.
That would be fun, I think.
Same as the auction. Item number six is a resolution to authorize the purchase of one Workman MDX and one Workman MD plus accessories from Century Equipment through the state purchasing program, not to exceed $20,741.32.
Also move second discussion.
Mr. Lina has a permit there, which is a look at, for our parks, for Diamond. Both of these will be kept at Diamond. Want to be able to drag all the fields and do a lot of work with that. The older one that we have up there, we're gonna take to Snyder, so we have something to get down there all the time, because there is a small garage in the back of the restroom, and we can use it to pick up trash and whatever else we need to transport around the park down to Snyder.
The funding is coming right out of the fund designated in the Diamond Fund for mowers, vehicles, equipment, that was set aside for this, and also still looking for a vehicle out of that fund also for the parks that we will be replacing down the line, so this was set aside funding straight from the Diamond Fund.
Further discussion, roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
The last, number seven, is a resolution to authorize the purchase of gas, oil, and diesel not to exceed $20,000.
Also move second discussion, roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes the roll call.
And that's gonna take us to our zoning department, and Mr. Falk is excused. Vacation, vacation, I believe is what he's...
Yes.
Also, Ms. Campbell, you'll...
Yes, before the board, you have item number one, which is the monthly report.
As far as just a quick question, I know on the cover here it's showing one of the properties from the Moving Ohio Forward demolition. Has Danny noted how many of our targeted properties have actually been completed, and how many are outstanding by any chance?
He hasn't noted that, and we do have one on the agenda this evening. I know they, once the paperwork's done completed, they're moving pretty quickly. I will ask for an update on that. I have one on the agenda that we have to address this evening for another reason, but I know that the ones that have been done have gone very smoothly, but I will ask him for an update on our targeted numbers and where we're at to that point. I also know that there may be a trustee or two that may want to go to a site while this is happening. I know that some have expressed interest, so I will put that on his radar also. And then I will move to item number three, which is a resolution to amend resolution number 14-101, which was passed on February 25, 2014, to change the Moving Ohio Forward Devolution Project total amount paid to Master Renovations Inc. from $82,000 to $85,000 to accommodate the additional $3,000 asbestos abatement procedure required by the Kansas City Health Department for 2623 North Eight Avenue, Northeast, to be taken from Fund 01A28D.
Also move second. Talking to Danny, he said that we will reimburse part of that.
Yeah, we will. There was a small buyer or issue that caused some additional...
Essentially, we didn't, the $100,000 that we committed towards demo, we didn't end up, based upon bids, utilizing all that, and then the county land bank matches that dollar for dollar, so there's another $100,000, and there's a percentage that's in there for administrative fees, and then the rest all goes to demolition. So based upon our match, we should be...
And he said we should be agreeing.
70% of that additional 3%, it has its circumstances.
Yes.
That's why it's remediating the issue, so we...
And that's...
Roll call. On that, Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And that's the end of the zoning report.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. That's gonna take us to our parks programming, and then turn that over to Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number one is our monthly report.
Is that the first time that t-shirts were awarded to the two of you?
This is the first time we fill the tournament in all the leagues, and bracketed them out, so we did, we did award them t-shirts. I think in the future, I have other ideas about better ways to utilize those funds and get longer dollar value, maybe hanging plaques and putting plates up with the winners each year.
I know people like, you know, championship t-shirts, so...
Everybody loves t-shirts, man.
They do, everybody loves them. That's a nice idea.
Item number two is our first quarterly report with comparison to first quarter of 2013. And I think you'll note, we've made significant strides, and where some of our adult co-ed leagues have fallen off, we've picked up in some of the youth leagues and a couple of the men's leagues. And where some of the rec has hit a plateau, we've picked up in some of the auxiliary programming assistance, so all in all, we've made a lot of progress, but certainly ways to go.
So the total increase from...
It's approximately, just over 700, it's under 7,000.
The indoor field runnels is a significant increase.
Yes, and this is...
What would you attribute that to?
More programming, I mean, we're selling more slots. We're full from, on Sundays through the indoor season, we're full from 8:00 a.m. we open, and we close at midnight on Sundays. Saturdays, we open at 8:00 and close at 10:30. Monday nights, we close at 10:30. Tuesday nights, we close at 9:00. Wednesday nights, we close at 9:00. Thursday nights, we close at 11:30, and Friday nights, we close at 10:30. So we're selling more, and we're selling earlier, and we're selling more early slots with the college teams getting some of their spring practices in, and we've found some new areas of business with the flag football tournament and the ultimate frisbee leagues and things that have picked up, so working on it. I know we were approximately $3,500 in gross revenue from session one of 2013, yes, 2013, I'm trying to remember what year this is, versus a year ago, 2012, so we're making progress.
Nice work.
Gentlemen, item number three is for an amended resolution on the fee and reservations packet to adopt a new language as it designates what constitutes an organized practice and what constitutes the final offenses and stuff, and they are highlighted on here as well.
So move second discussion.
Can I point out one thing?
Yeah.
I think as we were looking at this, and we did this, and I think, you know, I put no less than probably seven graphs together, I think some of the language was ambiguous, so all this really does is clear up for the average citizen what we're targeting and what we're looking for.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number four is a resolution to hire Courtney Fletcher as concession worker for the Parks Department, effective date is of April 9th, at a rate of 795 per hour with no benefits.
So move second discussion. Just as a clarification, this is to replace one of the two that we've lost due to resignation.
We've actually lost four, but this is two, and the next one is to replace two of the four that we've lost. These are the two particularly replace our married couple that we accepted as a...
Yeah, we still need to hire.
We still need to hire two, two more at least, to be successful.
Roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Item number five is a resolution to the Board of Trustees to hire one Christian S. Koenig as a concession worker for the Parks Department, effective date April 9th, at the rate of 795, from Fund 14A01D.
Also move second discussion, roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Just so the boards are aware, we have done announcements at all the local high schools to come to Plain Township to pick up an application as concession workers, so we're hoping that we get some more students to apply their perfect seasonal summer positions, so, you know, we need two more, we'd like a couple more besides two, so...
Okay, item number six is a discussion item. We looked and researched the idea of possibly a farmer's market in Plain Township. From the research I've done, as well as Mrs. Campbell and our programming specialists, it seems if we were to put something on the weekend, in particular Saturday, we would compete against three of the most established market programs in the county. We wanted to stay away from Wednesdays because our partner's just south of us at Jervasi hold a farmer's market on Wednesdays, so the proposal would be at Schneider Park for a trial period of eight to 10 weeks, maybe on a Monday or Tuesday from a 4 to 7. We've researched the rules and regulations, kind of the fees and assignments and dates and hours, and all these are flexible, of course, but we think there's a substantial opportunity to show off a park and offer a service to our township residents and create another piece of business for the parks, another park other than just Diamond. So we certainly would love your review and welcome your feedback, and as I said, I think we were preliminarily targeting Monday or a Tuesday evening from a 4 to 7.
Yeah, it says 3 to 6:30, we just picked a time, but really the time is flexible, or we, you know, put all the work into it, we just like the review of it, let us know if it's a go, and we can move forward with marketing of it. It's really, we felt as simple as...
It's a very turnkey operation.
...as our, you know, community brush, you know, and we know the vendors are out there, it would be good for our community.
And item number seven is just a reminder that tomorrow is the Stark County Jobs and Family Services Wear Blue Day. It's April 9th. It's to recognize their campaign for awareness for child abuse prevention. They asked that we wear blue, and I spoke with Lisa, and we've asked our departments to wear all blue, and jeans are allowed, we can take pictures and download them and just send our support to the folks downtown doing a nice job, so we're proud of the program. That's all for Parks Program.
That concludes park programming, nothing from our law director. It's like, no one on the streets here. Communications, there's nothing. Let's see, I'm going to bring us to the portion of the meeting, public speaks. If there's anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the Board of Trustees, you may do so by stating your name and your address for the record, and there is a three-minute limit, and the Board's discretion, any extension. Is there anybody that wishes to address the Board? Sir, if you would, just state your name and address for the fiscal officer and for the record.
I'm Richard Stuckey, 5725 Sandalwood, Northeast, 44721, obviously, here in Great Plain Township. The only reason that I'm here is because I'm sure you guys hear a lot of complaints, but I have something that I have waited now for an extra month to come because we keep getting more snow. But I think your road department needs to really, really be commended for the job that they have done this year compared to anybody else. That includes North Canton Township, anywhere we've been, they outdid everybody. And I just think that perhaps you offer them makes me proud, glad to see our money well-spent.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stuckey. I know Joe, Joe and his guys definitely appreciate it, because even though that you're out there on OT, that's time away from family and friends, and obviously, I think all of us are up here, a little biased, but it's pretty evident when you hit certain municipality or township borders where you're coming or where you're leaving, so we'll make sure that it gets conveyed to the rest of the guys as well.
And I hope they can come to Sandalwood first now.
They just may, they just may.
I think you just got bumped up to the top.
I might go myself.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address the Board of Trustees? That'll conclude the public speech. It takes us to Concerns of Trustees. Concerns of the fiscal officer, Mr. Flex. He's going to take us to the approval of the minutes for March 25th, 2014, and I'm going to so move on those. This is second, Mr. Gevasis. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
There is a need for executive session, so if it hereby is resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adjourn the executive session.
6:30.
Yeah, it must have bad eyes today. The lights are on. 6:33 PM from this regular meeting is authorized under Ohio Revised Code 121.22G for the purpose and consideration of 1A, Appointment of a Public Employee or Official, 1B, Employment of a Public Employee or Official, 1F, Compensation of a Public Employee or Official, 3, A Conference with the Law Director or other retained counsel concerning pending or imminent court action. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne, can I see you for a second, please?